Good evening and welcome to our February Smyrna Town Council meeting. I will call this meeting to order and tonight I'm going to ask our Chief of Police Kevin Arnold to do our prayer. And tonight, our pledge will be led by Smyrna citizen Lennox Bennett. If you will all stand with me, please.
Everyone will join me in prayer. Lord in heaven, we'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for all the many blessings that you continue to bestow upon this community. We ask that you watch over our citizens and keep them safe as they go about their daily activities. Please be with all of our personnel here at the town, protect them, guide them as they work every day. Lord, please be with this council and help them tonight as they make their decisions. Father, we ask for forgiveness of our sins and we say all these things in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
So for doing our pledge tonight, we have a certificate for you. And if you'll stand right here so everybody can see you on camera and Chief Bill can give you your certificate. So Lennox, Sarah here, Lennox. Lennox is really famous because Lennox has somebody that's really special to us that works with us here at the town. It's her pawpaw. So tell everybody who your pawpaw is. No? Oh, then she's just like Chief Arnold. She is very quiet and very shy. Everybody knows. So the Chief of Police is Lennox's granddad. So didn't she do a great job? So we always appreciate people coming to do the pledge for us. So thank you for coming to be with us tonight. You did a great job. I think sometimes we forget to be that agent. It's so overwhelming to get up in front of a large group. So Lennox, we really appreciate that. So I am now going to ask Ms. Amber to do a roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. We've got Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
Present.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
And Mayor Reed.
Here. Okay, we will move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the January 11th, 2022, and January 27th, 2022 meetings. Jeff, are these in order?
In order as before, Mayor.
Okay, any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Brian, any correspondence or communications tonight?
None this evening, Mayor.
Any awards or recognitions?
None this evening, Mayor.
Okay. Then we will move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that are determined by our town manager to be somewhat of routine matters, but if there is an item that a council member would like to pull off and discuss individually, we can do that. But I do like to read the items to you so you know exactly what we're voting on. Our first item is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the special event application to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to use Jefferson Springs Park for Boat Day and Waterfest this summer. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an amended appraisal agreement with Randy Button and Associates due to realignment of North Lowry Water Project resulting in additional easements. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with LDA Emily Kelly to handle all SRF administrative work for the INI project. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the LDA with LDA Emily Kelly for administrative duties relating to the Ammival Road Sewer Project, SRF. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with LDA Emily Kelly to handle all SRF administrative duties for the Sam Ridley Weekly Lane Water Model Project. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Polk and Associates Construction of Nashville pertaining to the 1,500 square foot addition to the Fire Station 1. These are all the items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there anything a council member would like to pull off and discuss individually?
Let's see. The Ammival Road.
The which one?
Is that D?
D. Okay. So we'll pull item D off and talk about it individually. Or is there any other item that someone would like to discuss individually? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda other than item D?
Motion to approve all items except item D.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go back to item D, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the LD with LDA Emily Kelly for administrative duties relating to the Ammival Road Sewer Project, which is with SRF funding. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. So this is part of the project that goes with the Linwood development. So we applied to SRF for engineering design and right-of-way. What they pay for on right-of-way is for to obtain the easements, not the actual cost of the easement. And what this is, is an SRF five-year planning loan. If the project with Linwood did not materialize, we would not take the loan and would not be subject to any payments.
I just didn't know if we had like a start date, a planned date for when this part of the project would start.
Not yet.
Okay. Then I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike on item D? Then, do I have a motion to approve item D, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute with LDA Emily Kelly for administrative duties relating to the Ammival Road Sewer Project with SRF?
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item D passes as well. Item seven is old business. There were no items for the council to consider at this time, so we'll move on to our new business. And there are a couple of items to consider. Our first is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map 33, parcels 28.00, 44.00, 44.04, and part of parcel 44.02, to go from R1, R3, and C2 with ESO to PRD with ESO. The properties requested to be rezoned contain 37.34 acres and are located on Old Nashville Highway and Rocky Fork Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning request for several parcels, all to be part of one development, one PRD. They do have frontage on Old Nashville Highway and Rocky Fork Road, near the intersection of those two streets. Land use plan will support coming Old Nashville Highway. We had a corridor area for that, as well as a 24 gateway character area. And both of these areas would support a higher density residential development such as is requested. Old Nashville corridor character would also support commercial along the eastern part of this development. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R2, R3, C2, and the PRD, which is at the 2090 Rocky Fork Road. That PRD was approved a few months ago. Property also does lie within Eden Springs Gateway Overlay District, and that is not proposed to be changed with this request. This proposed PRD is for 271 townhomes. Access would be from Old Nashville Highway in two locations, as well as Rocky Fork Road. The major thoroughfare plan calls for a collector to connect Rocky Fork Road to Eden Springs Road West through this site, and it has been shown on this plan. Additional right-of-way would be required along Rocky Fork Road, consistent with the major thoroughfare plan as well. The other roads within the development would be private. The minimum square footage of the townhomes would be 1,306 square feet. The overall density is about 7.26 per acre. The proposed water line for the development will be required to loop to the 12-inch line on Rocky Fork Road at Old Nashville Highway to ensure adequate fire flow. Sidewalks will be a part of Rocky Fork Road and the new public road. I did attach the pattern book. I will say, there were several conditions of the recommendation from Planning Commission, which was to approve. I'll go through those and then I'll finish up. One, that the units along Old Nashville Highway and Rocky Fork Road are required to face those two roads with the rear facing the internal parking areas. Minimum size of the units is 1,306 square feet. Number three, one iteration of this plan did have some live-work units, so there are no live-work units within this development. Number four, all driveways for any townhomes with a garage are required to be at least 18 feet wide. Number five, additional brick or stone is required on the rear elevations of the garage units, similar to what is shown for the nine-garage units, and add a left turn lane and left and right turn lane on to Rocky Fork Road from the neighborhood collector's tree. We did receive a revised book, pattern book, that addressed all of those comments. That is not what's in your packet. I didn't receive it in time to get it in the packet, but we will put that in the packet for the, if you choose to approve this tonight, we will put it in the packet for the workshop and second reading, so you can see those revisions as well. Again, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request unanimously, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Kevin, the connector road to Eden Springs Road, it looks like there's two stubs on there, potentially be either one or...
The one that's, the public road is the north-south road there, that comes from Rocky Fork Road into the project and then goes straight north. That is the, that is the public road. There are two stubs to the west that would be, they're as private roads, but there will be connections to those, those other properties as well. But it would actually connect, where it connects at, or is proposed to stop at the northern property line, it would then go eventually make its way to Eden Springs Road as those northern, those properties to the north develop.
Kevin, is the house that was on there, is it down in the bottom corner or is it part of this property?
There's a house on Old Nashville Highway.
Oh, yeah, that one. Is it, is that the one that's still there in that corner? Or is it in the new property here, do you know? Or in the, what they're proposing?
It's, it's in that property that's, that's being proposed.
Okay.
It would go away.
It will go away?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it'll join right next to the school, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It goes all from the school, everything between the school and the campground.
Other questions or comments? Seeing no questions or comments, do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, other discussion?
Could Kevin just talk about the traffic? I know we, on, at the Planning Commission, you talked about having the traffic study and not needing to do any changes, but can he just talk about what that looks like?
Yeah, there was a traffic study that was actually performed for a previous version of this development that was withdrawn before it ever went to Planning Commission, which had more units on it. It had a mix of townhomes and apartments. And so the traffic study that was a part of that basically talked about some signal modifications at Eden Springs, Old Nashville Highway intersection was the primary change. And then there were some, some recommendations on the access points to Rocky Fork and Old Nashville Highway as far as the signage and those kind of things. But that was really the, the primary alteration was really, was to, at the signalized intersection there of Old Nashville and Eden Springs Road. And so we did not ask them to revise that because the unit's number count went down pretty significantly. So we didn't see there was, it would be, if anything, it would be less recommendations.
Other questions or comments?
No, but Kevin just mentioned previously, when we had this sent to us the first time around, there were apartment complexes involved, and we, we just decided that wasn't going to be a good fit there. The KOA campground being a neighbor too made us feel like we needed some sort of buffer there as well. And they're doing all their driveways 35-foot setbacks as, to the garage portion of it, 18 feet wide. That helps us eliminate parking problems that we've had in the past. This is about half the density of a permissible R6. So with that in mind, it's attached housing is what it is, instead of, everybody likes to use the word townhomes negatively sometimes, but I think this makes sense for affordability for a lot of our citizens that are having trouble finding a house. And it's a development that fits that need in that capacity. So that's the one reason I think the Planning Commission looked at this and appreciated the developers coming to us and removing the apartment portion of this. That's where we were having a lot of heartburn, and they took care of that.
Other questions or comments?
She's got 119 guest spaces. How does that compare to some of the other ones we've done together?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
The guest parking. Can you reference that? 119 spaces, Greg?
Yeah, and that's, you know, we try to get as close as we can to kind of maybe like a half space per unit or something, so it's not quite there, but it's almost there. There's, is some, there is, but we feel like, especially with the revised book, which does have, I don't think they added any guest spaces, but they did add some, because there's more spaces available in driveways now, because their initial book did only had single width of driveways on the, the units that only have a single car garage. And so it's, it's, it's pretty comparable, and I feel comfortable with the amount of parking they're providing.
So four for each unit, and five if they've got a garage? Possibly six if there's two?
Yes, there's, with the two-car garages, you'd have six. On those garage units, you'd have at least four in the driveways.
Four.
And then you've got the, the surface parking, because some of the units won't have garages.
Right.
So you've got surface parking for those, as well as the guest parking.
Okay. Other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor. There's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item two is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28, parcel 44.18, to go from C2 to PCD. It's requested by Michael LaBrayton. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 1.17 acres and is located at the corner of Sam Ridley Parkway West and Needham Drive. This is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request for rezoning. It is at the corner of Sam Ridley and Needham Drive. Land use plan was, is kind of, this is our Sam Ridley corridor character area, which was kind of a mix of kind of high-intensity regional retail and service, along with office, medical, hospitality, and residential uses could be allowed in this area. Surrounding zoning for this request is all C2. This proposed PCD is for a 2,656 square feet, four-bay oil change business. The elevations do meet the revised design review guidelines. Access would be from Needham Drive in one location, with traffic flow to direct any vehicles to the rear of the building. So there would be quite a bit of stacking space within the lot, not, don't feel too, not concerned about stacking, getting out into Needham Drive there. The Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval, 6 for, 1 against, and staff would recommend approval.
Questions or comments for Kevin? Guess I want to have some discussion with council. You know, I guess I have a little bit of concern with this property, being that everything around it is C2, and this could not come in under C2. So that's the reason it was brought like it was. And I just really feel like this property is more designed for C2, but everybody else may feel differently.
Well, the product really to be a PCD, or the reason it's coming as a PCD is because the zoning it really needs is a C5 zone.
Yeah.
And so the fit, I was the one that voted no, from the Planning Commission, and that's predominantly the reason why. I just didn't see it as a commercial fit when it's a C5 product around C2 zones.
Mayor, I have the same concerns as you do.
Yeah.
And it being on the major thoroughfare in a prime location, that, that concerns me.
I supported it on planning. The reason I've done, did that was that we have had instances where we have had a C2 product that we brought in a PRD for the same usage. I felt the design was consistent, as far as the elevation's consistent with what we're trying to achieve on Sam Ridley there. And that was basically it. And knowing that we do have a couple other businesses on the highway that have similar usage, it may or may not, I know they fell under the old zoning at that point, so that's different because they were allowed at that point in time, and I can think of the Firestone, and there's another Valvoline I can think of that are on Sam Ridley. And I think, you know, if we look at the tire discounter and discount tires, you see that we still have that automotive use there. So for those reasons, I supported it.
Anybody else?
Well, I know when, when I was looking at it, years ago, it was like Tim said, this would have fit under C2, and we removed this out of C2 for a particular reason and moved it to C5. And I just, I kind of hate to see it, you know, go, since we've removed it, why would we put it back in in a different way?
Other comments? Okay, we've heard comments. Do I have a motion?
I will stick with my motion from the Planning Commission. I would, I would make a motion to deny this for purposes of not fitting in a C2 zone appropriately.
Okay. We have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second to deny, any other discussion or comments? Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor to deny. All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes to deny. We'll move on to item three, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 32, part of parcel 19.01, requested by SCC Incorporated on behalf of John Mitchell Burns, containing two one-hundredths of an acre. Property requested to be located south of Rock Springs Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a piece of property, it's a part of a piece of property that we've looked at several times over the last several years. It's only, it's a very small area that has been requested to be annexed. It's adjacent to the Walnut Riz development, which is currently under development. The land use plan will support medium-density, single-family residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is R3 in town and RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services upon annexation. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this unanimously, and staff would also recommend approval.
Tim, or Mark, anything on this?
We're basically increasing the size of a lot.
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
It's pretty simple. This is for, they need a little bit more land for this particular lot.
Yeah. Is it needed so that the house fits the square footage of the lot? Is that why they need to get the additional?
With the particular house plan that they want to use for this lot, it won't, they need more land. And they actually submitted a plat to me to add the land, and I said, this land is not in Smyrna, so that's when we went to, they started this process to annex it so they could do that. But that's really all it is, is to make the lot a little bit bigger.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I move we approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four is consideration of an ordinance relative to the de-annexation of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 62.03, and part of parcel 62.01, requested by John Hill, containing 4.13 acres. The property requested is located at 8810 Brierley Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
These are, this is, well, all of one track and part of another one that are west of Brierley Road, south of the Blakeney Development. The land use plan would support medium-density, single-family here as well, and the surrounding zoning is RM in Rutherford County and PRD, which is Blakeney in town. History on this one, in June 2019, as a part of the Blakeney Development, a portion of Mr. Hill's property was annexed as a part of a land swap with the developers of Blakeney. And the land which was swapped to Mr. Hill was rezoned from PRD to R1 at that time. That land is still within the town, and Mr. Hill now has requested that it be removed from the town limits. It is the very rear portion of his property. It is vacant. It actually is somewhat difficult for the town to provide services there. We haven't expended any money to provide services to that area since it was annexed. And so as far as, it was part of Blakeney, we would have, but, but this, I mean, this not even, Blakeney never even got to that portion of their development before it was swapped to Mr. Hill. So the Planning Commission did review this request, did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Kevin, I don't ever recall doing a de-annexation.
It's pretty rare. I know one time, one time was kind of in that area between Smyrna-Laverne, there was, there was a small area we kind of swapped and different things, but it's, it's pretty rare.
Yeah. Any questions for Kevin?
No questions, but one of the questions that came up in planning, just for clarification, is no services have been, been provided there at our expense.
Right.
So if he wants to be de-annexed, it's not, no harm, no foul on an expense portion from us.
Then do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is package liquor board report. There were no applications for the town to consider at this time. Item C is consideration of a resolution for the 2022 capital outlay note. Rex?
Mayor and Council, good evening. The town has decided to upgrade its computer system. The cost is $682,207, and we've chosen to finance this over three years. The comptroller has approved for the town to finance this with Dell Financial Services, and the comptroller requires the town to pass the attached resolution.
Questions for Rex? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is consideration and submission of the public debt notice to the comptroller of the treasury. Rex?
Yes, ma'am. The comptroller requires public debt incurred by the town to be announced at a public meeting. This requires no council action, just a mayor's signature. I have attached the Form CT 0253 related to the 2022 capital outlay note, and it will be submitted to the Office of State and Local Finance.
Questions for Rex on this? Since no council, nothing has to be done?
No, ma'am.
Just have to announce. Perfect. Okay. Thanks, Rex. Any status reports tonight, Brian? Okay. Before we move into announcements, it looks like we have a group here with us tonight. And is there a spokesperson for the group that would like to come up? Sounds like.
So if you'll tell us, one, tell us your name, so everybody can, can know you, Scott, and then also if you will tell us the group that's here and what you, why you all are here tonight.
Absolutely. My name is Scott Peebles. I am the scoutmaster of, yeah, we've met and we found out we're not related. We've met at events and we're long-lost cousins. But our troop is here, Troop 422, out of Smyrna, and we are working on our citizenship and the community merit badge, and one of the things is to come to a city council meeting and find in a, a topic that is important to us and discuss that in our meeting, so.
Great.
We are here for that.
Well, would you all be opposed to coming up and getting here? One, so you can get on TV, and two, so we might be able to all stand up and get a photo with you guys? Would that be okay?
Absolutely, yeah. They're looking back and seeing if they're on TV.
Oh, and seeing their picture on there? So if they'll just come stand right here and turn and face the, face towards the TV, then that way they'll all be, and if we'll all stand up, then Chief can...
Now, you're famous and can tweet this out.
There you go. There you go. That's right, that's right. Getting everybody just getting a spot. Okay, what do we do? I think you're wanting us to squish in, y'all.
Oh, squish in.
I think.
Get real close to Mark. Come on over here, Stevie.
Y'all, this is the one that'll go on social media. So, y'all look here and smile for me, okay? Don't go other places. This'll go on Facebook. One, two, three. There. Okay, before, don't y'all sit down yet and I'll come, y'all can sit down.
Did we earn our merit badge?
Yes. I'm going to let everybody introduce themselves and don't you tell us what school you go to? How about that? Okay?
My name is Gabe Stanley and I go to Rocky Fork Mill.
Okay.
Brayden Mangrum, Stewart's Creek High.
Preston Peebles, I have no clue what my school name is.
Oh, no clue, it's a school, well, there we go.
I'm Liam Richardson and I'm homeschooled.
And you're homeschooled. And do you like your teacher?
Yes.
Yes, good answer, good answer.
I am Christian Flom and I go to Smyrna High School.
Smyrna High School.
My name is Tobias Patterson and I go to Stewart's Creek High School.
My name is Aaron Holman and I go to Smyrna High School.
My name is Ethan Holloway and I go to Smyrna Middle.
I'm Brandon Devlin, I go to Rock Springs Middle.
I'm Scott Peebles, I work from home.
Very good. Well, I want to tell you how glad we are to have you all with us tonight. And I think I may have happened to talk to y'all's group yet. I was going to say, I thought some people looked familiar to me. So, but we hope that it has been informative tonight and if you have questions, we are more than happy to answer those after the meeting. And for those of you that attend Smyrna High School, everybody sitting behind you tonight also attended Smyrna High School. So, and Stewart's Creek just wasn't here when, when, when we were in school. So, thank you all for coming and it'll be, we just have a few more things and then the meeting will be over. I promise, it's not much longer.
No, ma'am.
Nothing from you? Is everything going good?
Everything's going great.
Well, I was glad to see you back in the chair. You know, I never know if you, if you were going to stay or not.
I'm here.
You're here, good. Brian, what about you?
Mayor and Council, I have just a couple of things I'd like to share with you this evening. First, start off with a thank you note from Mark and Connie Atkins and just wanted to thank you for the beautiful throws sent in memory of my dad. Your thoughts and prayers are all appreciated and tell Connie we're still praying for and appreciate the nice note. I do have a couple of other things to share with you. Unfortunately, I have to share tonight Gary Barnes, one of our folks that work in the utility department, had a loss in his family. His mother-in-law passed away about a week or so ago. And then this morning, as I was reading the paper, I saw an obituary and Jeff Milstead's mother-in-law passed away. He was in the office this morning and I shared our condolences and wished them the best as they go through the, the process of grieving. Had a, kind of on a similar note, it's tied around the funerals, but attended a, we got a real nice note via the email from a Tim Sutherland. He attended a funeral for his aunt in our town. It says this afternoon, this was last Thursday. Just wanted to say, "You have the most respectful and professional group of officers coordinating the escort from the funeral home to the gravesite and that I have ever witnessed. God bless you all." And, you know, that's one of the things that we still do here in Smyrna and very proud of that. And the, the chief and his group do a great job of showing respect and leading those possessions to the funeral, from the funeral home to the gravesites. I also received a real nice note today from somebody, somebody most of us know, Patsy Brown, thanking the town. She recently had some brush in front of her house and the brush trucks got out and got it picked up today. She said, "Honestly, there was a pretty good pile out there. They had, I think, cut down a cedar tree and she was worried about all the little limbs and stuff. She watched our guys work diligently getting the tree up and thought, you know, after they left, you dress appropriately, it was early this morning, and go out and finish cleaning up the mess." And she said she was pleasantly surprised when she saw our truck move forward and the two guys get out of the truck and come back and clean up the, even the small straggler pieces of limbs and stuff and put them in the truck and haul them off. So, she just wanted to show some appreciation to our streets department and Tom's group and the work they do. And we do appreciate that service that they provide. Just a couple of real quick announcements. You've, you've seen the red box out in the lobby. We're continuing for another couple of weeks now to work with the Souls for Souls. This is an event that they've asked us to participate in through my Leadership Middle Tennessee class. We are collecting new tennis shoes, sizes from age kindergarten through seniors in high school. All the shoes that are collected in Rutherford County will stay with the Rutherford County schools. We'll be completing that at the end of this month. But if anybody feels led to go out and pick up some tennis shoes and drop them off in the lobby here, I think First Bank and Wilson Bank and Trust are also helping with that project. But we do have a collection site here at Town Hall. The town of Smyrna is also, and we're in high gear with the VITA program. We are working with the United Way of Rutherford and Cannon Counties to host the volunteer income tax assistance program that's called VITA. Anybody that is, their income is $70,000 or less has the opportunity to come in and have free tax service provided to them with tax professionals. They are taking appointments. You can call 615-830-7940 or you can visit the website, www.yerlocaluw.org/vita, to schedule an appointment. That is in the rear of our building downstairs. Some of you will remember that's the old entrance into the police department. So, anybody in the community needing those services, they can be provided. Just wanted to remind everybody that we have a holiday coming up, February the 21st. In observance of the President's Day holiday, the town offices will be closed. Of course, we are grateful that our fire, police, water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, and our parks will be open and continuing to work to serve the community. But hopefully some of us will get to enjoy a holiday and a day off. So, I just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
There's also another holiday, not necessarily that you would need to know, but probably Todd Spearman would need to know, that Valentine's Day is also going to be coming up.
I've already got my plans for Valentine's.
So, I knew that you would, but I just wanted to make sure for some of those that might not remember. You're covered? Good.
But thank you for letting us know.
I just want to keep you guys out of trouble.
You'd probably get us in more trouble than you would.
No, 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 no.
The last item I have is the Love Where You Live 2022. That's something that we're really emphasizing and recently I've witnessed in a couple of areas. Tom has his guys out with some helpers that we're able to receive from the Rutherford County Workhouse to help us clean up some litter. But folks, I just, you know, be proud of our town. We've got a beautiful community. It's a conscious decision that we individually make the litter or not the litter. We just challenge you not to litter our streets. If you're hauling things to the convenience centers to make sure that it's secured at the back and doesn't blow out of your truck, that stuff just, doesn't just magically disappear. We do have to exert a lot of effort, a lot of time and a lot of money to try to do the best we can. And I will be honest with you, we get a lot of calls about, you know, the condition of our streets and litter on our streets. And it's something we all have to take individual efforts to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So, love where you live, keep Smyrna clean.
And for the scouts, that's probably one of the biggest issues that we have across town. And I know y'all are great about helping us, but any of y'all that can help pass the word on, because I will tell you, it's the youngsters that can help talk to their parents about it or to their friends and have them talk to their parents. So, any help that you all can give us would be very beneficial and we would really appreciate it. Jeffreyell?
I think the mayor.
Raquel?
Just my condolences to the families who have experienced loss within the town and just a happy Valentines Day coming up. So, happy Valentine's Day to everyone. And as the mayor said, make sure you go out and get your gifts.
That's right.
So, you stay out of trouble.
I promise you'll love where you live much more if you get a Valentine's Day gift for somebody. HG?
Mayor Esther, when you go shopping for your Valentine, do it local.
Do it local? Okay.
And it be kind.
And do you want it to be an oil change from Lubros? Is that what you're asking for?
Gift cards are better.
Yes, that would be good.
That would be great. Okay, got it. No, I do agree, it needs to be shopping local to do that. I agree. Nothing else? I will write and say your second thought, she missed it.
I, I did, I said it be kind.
Oh, did you say it? I just didn't hear you. Okay, sorry. Okay.
She don't like to hear that.
She don't know how to do that.
Tim?
I will try and shop local for my Valentine, but if I came home with a oil change coupon, it'd be, it'd be the last one. I mean, no offense.
She greets you up.
You will love where you live here. You know how we live. Condolences to the Barnes and Milstead family. And that's it.
Great. Jerry?
Just a couple of things, and you may be talking about it later on, but we, we toured Smurty Redymix today and that was a very, very nice building that they're building. But thanks to Mike, Jeff, Ryan, Hollinshead for allowing us to come over there. That was good. And the other thing, the only last thing I've got is a friend of mine is in the audience, Jerry Green. Jerry is a longtime friend of mine from eighth, seventh grade, I guess in the seventh grade, isn't it? And so, he's back in town for a little bit and I think he and I are going to spend a little time this evening together. But Jerry, it's good to see you and welcome, welcome back.
Great. Does Jerry have any stories that he may need to share?
Not one, not anything.
Not anything?
Not anything.
Should we ask him?
Jerry, we'll talk after the meeting. I'm back. Steve?
I actually don't have anything tonight other than happy Valentine's Day and I'll take your advice, Mayor Esther, and make sure I pick up some.
See how well you've trained us.
I know, I know.
Isn't it awesome? I'd be curious to know what the Boy Scouts topic ends up being. That would be fun, right?
Yes, yes, we might need to know that.
Yeah, that could be interesting. Obviously condolences to Gary and Roseanne, loss of Roseanne's mother, and board and committee appointments are coming up soon. I've noticed Phil, our BZA member, is sitting out there taking all this in. And Phil is a volunteer on our Board of Zoning Appeals. We appreciate him being here. He's always involved in the community and stays that way and probably will continue to do more. So, also wanted to wish Connie a happy Valentine's Day and that is all I have.
Great. I also wanted to thank Mike, Jeff, and Ryan for the tour of Smurty Redymix today. If you've not had a chance to see the building from Jefferson Pike, recommend you drive by. It is a phenomenal facility. But also want to thank them for what they do for our community. There are so many things behind the scenes that nobody knows that they do. I mean, there's so much out front. They are our top sponsor for our Top Gun Night Run and so many other things here in the town, but it's those things that they do that nobody else knows. And they've never forgotten where they come from and we so appreciate that for them continuing to give back. And you know what? They could have built that facility anywhere. They could have built, they could have stayed in downtown Nashville, but they chose to have their headquarters right here. And I think that says a lot about them, but I also think it says a lot about us that they want to continue to partner with the town.